Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the May eighth, 2018 Town Council meeting to order. Lisa, will you give us a real call, please?
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Andy Key.
Here.
Mike Van Happy. Chris Roby. Matt Milburn.
Here.
Luke Gier.
President.
Rich Gardner.
Here. Andy, will you give us the application?
Sure. Dear Emily, Father, we thank you for gathering us here today to make some important decisions on the future of Rangelay. We ask that you give us the strength and the direction that we need to go in what's best for the community members of Rangelay. We thank you for all you have given us and done for us. Thank you for the, excuse me, please look over the troops as they defend us continuously and guide them and keep them strong with all the political turmoil. Let them know that we are supportive of them and enjoy or appreciative of what they're doing for us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Peter, we'll lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Peter, do we have any changes to the, has anybody looked at the, has everybody had a chance to look at the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the date, sorry, April first? Twenty-fourth meeting, sorry.
Second. We have a motion by Andy Key, second by Rich Gardner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions and public input? Changes to the agenda, Peter?
No.
Reports from council members, does anybody have anything that they'd like to report on their stuff from the last meeting, special committees?
I got, I got some updates from AGNC, the AGNC meeting I went to. The first thing I'll start with was the Dinosaur Welcome Center. They have had a three, three and a half percent increase already for March. They're not sure if that's the signage or the other new recent business ventures in dinosaur, but they did say they are seeing more traffic. Let's see, the other one was the Colorado World Development from the, let's see, where did that one go? From the USDA came and they spoke to us about some loan opportunities, grant programs for rural communities. And I've had some discussions with Peter and Vinnie about some of the stuff they're offering. They came and basically told us, you know, hey, like, make sure you guys are taking advantage of this. One of the issues Peter's run into with the USDA is the qualifying feature of it for Rangelay, we don't qualify for a lot of it because our median income is too high or unemployment is not high enough, stuff like that. So, those are some of the issues we're going to work through. They have some really interesting grant opportunities and I have this, if you guys want to check through it and see what's there. The other thing that we talked about at the AGNC meeting is, this has been on our agenda a little bit, was there's now a joint concurrent resolution for redistricting, so the Fair Districts Initiative joined up with the other group, which is who came and presented to us, and this was, I'm gonna butcher his last name, but Bernie Bershur, Bershur, he's the former Secretary of State for Colorado, and he came and talked to us about it and so they cleaned up a couple of those things we were really concerned about. Agency went ahead and supported it. I'll just update you on where that's at right now is, as of yesterday, it was passed, that's the Senate, actually, it should be both, it's joint concurrent, so, should have passed both on third reading, it was amended. There's SCR eighteen zero zero four and zero zero five that both passed and those are both involving redistricting. The big concern we, I had had and that had come up through the agency was the gifting and they, these individuals will be considered state officials, so they will be under the gifting laws of Colorado and have to abide to those, which was nice to hear. Let's see, I think that's pretty much it.
Can I get a copy of this?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually drop it off with Peter to give it to him, so, yeah, we can get some copies for everybody, get that passed around.
We're scanning it.
Yep.
Sure.
Works too. That's all I have.
COP meeting?
It's going great. Enjoyed all those information shared, you know, by the police department and been doing a great job. I think anybody that missed the opportunity, well, you know, should, should regret it. I found it. About yourself?
I do, I think it's been informative and it's good to see their point of view on, on stuff that they go through day in, day out, so.
Yep, great job.
Some good presentations they've done. Anybody else? Supervisor's report, Mr. Reed.
Evening, Council.
Evening. Thank you.
Things are pretty hectic this time of the year, we got a lot going on. We're trying to start with the water plant, trying to finish up with a lot of the cosmetics and the cleanup and everything that we've had from renovations over the years, trying to get things organized back in the water plant, working pretty much, just trying to get things ready for you guys tomorrow night for presentation, hoping that, probably only going to get to nickel tour tomorrow, but I'd like to stand anybody that, you know, wants to schedule some timeframes, come out and, you know, get the two dollar tour, more than glad to do that, sit down with you and think that'd be beneficial for you and me. The Clary Building, almost complete. Right now, we're working on trying to renegotiate a little bit with the concrete work for the aprons in the front of the building. Basically, the building's pretty well up and functional. Doocy's will be able to set the transformer for the power supply once concrete floor is in. We're shooting for sometime next week. Other than that, we're also working on, and something I haven't informed the board yet, that we took on a task and we're writing the procedures and everything to start doing our own in-house testing that's required by state and we're, we know that this would be a cost-effective measure for the town and would save us a great deal of money and expense in traveling. We have to, I don't know if you guys realize that we travel a great deal forth, back and forth to Grand Junction all through the year. Actually, every other week, we're traveling there to collect samples and drop off samples. So, we're, we're hoping to eliminate that. That should work to our benefit and help reduce costs. The wastewater grant, Buck and them finished the final patchwork on the manhole project. Once Clary Building's done, that looks like we'll be wrapping up the wastewater grant. I think both of them wrap up right around the end of June. We've still got some repair work that we need to do for our airlines for Pond C. We do air induction underneath the ponds for aeration. I need to revamp the two ariators for Pond A. We're hoping to do that, too. So, we've got some things slated in projects down there. We, we have to do some additional sampling for the sledge down there before we can start removing it. Alan Doocy would like all of it, but once we get over this hump, then we can start hauling it off to him. It'll be quite a bit of work and take a lot of bit of time and effort to do that, but hopefully by the end of the year, we'll get it done. We also have our manholes, our collection systems for wastewater, do with jetting of all the sewer lines this year we're open. Our goal is to get one-third of the town completed. That's generally how it works, you do a quarter to a third of the town a year, so every four years, you have a complete turnover as far as jetting on the lines. Other than that, drawwater system's up and running. Need to schedule a meeting for them. Things are running pretty good. Emily passed her next level of, for her water license under C, which is outstanding. So far with the new troops, we're batting a hundred. Other than that, I conclude my report.
Thanks, John.
The sewer demand holes, I noticed there, the one behind the post office was still needing to be concreted. One of those repairs, has that been done this week or is that gonna be?
Yeah, it's done. It was done.
We're working on that this afternoon.
Okay, 'cause I know last weekend it was, it was a, still a pothole, so, just making sure.
Not anymore.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So, it came to my attention that, that you guys have been doing some research on chemicals that you can use to help with the algae situation?
That is correct.
Is that something you'd like to elaborate on or?
We're currently working with a group that's called ATS and they're out of California and they have some chemicals and actually, they wanted to do a pilot study with us and what they were hoping to do is eliminate our TOC, total organic carbon is what we try to remove primarily through the water treatment process that we do. This also eliminates algae and growth and blooms in water. Where we're concerned about algae growth and blooms primarily is the intake, but also the preset ponds. So, they want to do a pilot study with us where they would bring the chemical in, but we got a few hoops to jump through with state, you just can't dump it in the river. But, what they've told me is this would work wonders for the problem that they're having in Meeker. And why they haven't reached out, don't know, but if you go online under ATS, you can, they've got all kinds of stuff, they've been around a long time. Actually, I can get you a business card so you can talk to them. I'll get the number for you and everything.
That'd be awesome, yeah, thank you.
Maybe an MSDS on it so we can determine if it's, I guess it's okay for human consumption, right?
It's already being utilized.
Okay.
Is this something that we might be able to utilize injecting into our current system somewhere?
Mm-hmm. We want to inject it into the wet well at the river intake station. We're hoping that we don't have to jump through too many hoops with states, the state department to get it approved. It would be nice. I wouldn't count on it, don't take it to the bank yet, but it's worth checking into.
Cost-wise, would it be effective?
If it removes TOC, yes, 'cause I would even be able to lower the dosing of the current chemicals that we're using at the water plant. And that's our primary goal is to get rid of as many chemicals as we can in our water and TOC.
Cool, thank you. Appreciate that.
Anybody else for Don?
Town of Meeker's called and they would like to hold a joint meeting with the council here in Rangelay, they'd be willing to drive down, they'd like to target the fourteenth if we can, Andy and I have been talking about this. At the same time, we could, SIRS that same week wanted to bring their attorney in to provide the training that we usually host for new council members, or for new, for new council in general, talking about roles and responsibilities for the new council members. So, talked to Meeker, kind of like to marry that whole project and both Meeker and Rangelay would both benefit from the SIRS meeting as well as the interaction between the two boards, so, we're trying to work out all the details on that, but it looks like the night of the fourteenth is turning out to be the best night, fourteenth of June, I'm sorry, fourteenth of June, so, we'll have more on that and try to get that on your calendars. We are nearly complete with the wiring of the three main facilities and adding those to the, to the internet, to the town's internets, so the gas department, water treatment plant, and public works should be online and they should also have the VoIP phone system so that they're an extension away from our phones here at Town Hall. And overall, the cost of the system will drop, once we're fully implemented, the cost of internet service will drop fairly significantly by close to three thousand a year by the time we get all of our internet providers either out or back into the, into each of those facilities and then we'll have that communication and backup storage happening at a central location for all the, all these remote locations, with the exception of the animal shelter and the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, we don't have a good option for those two locations, so. Working on an IGA with county attorney. Our attorney is here tonight, but he's been in the middle of that. We kind of focused our model for the initial IGA for the building inspector, for the building department, using the Craig Moffett IGA model and we submitted that to county attorney, they're looking at it. They have a preference, it looks like, maybe towards the Mesa County IGA, so they're, we're expecting some changes coming back from the county in terms of how that might, might look when we get it back. Anyway, we'll have to see what they've got to start working on a resolution between what, what the two entities might be looking at. RDA meeting next week on the seventeenth and we're looking to schedule a URA attorney to discuss the urban renewal plan, or the, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the urban renewal plan, I think is something that needs, at this point, to be modified. It's over twenty-five years old and right now, we'd have a difficult time, I think, implementing a tax increment funding scenario based on our current plans, so. Generally, within the statute, every twenty-five years, you're, you're generally looking at updating those plans. The plan area can be updated at any time and our plan area is basically a half block off of Main Street from Kennedy to Stanlet. Those are the areas that we currently operate in, with the exception of a couple of areas outside of that, but, so all those things will be looked at. We'll be needing to update our BLIT study as part of that process where you go through and you categorize each of the buildings in the plan area to determine their, their habitability and whether they are, might add to the definition of BLIT. So, tomorrow, we're having a, a meeting up at the Elks Trap Club site. The Colorado Oil and Gas Association is working to organize a volunteer day on June first. They want to come up tomorrow just to kind of look at the project and see what can be accomplished and what the manpower looks like compared to the work that's going to be, going to be undertaken up there. So far, it looks like painting the trap club, we got a couple of fence lines that we might be able to complete on that day, new benches, painting the old benches, you know, and then there'll be a meal up there for the COGA members. Rich, you're, you're a company, obviously, a COGA member and Andy, I think you're also as well, but, so tomorrow, ten o'clock, if you're up in the area and want to participate in that meeting with Susan Avalar and the COGA representatives. Let me see, oh. We're also working on the model traffic code. Dan has given us the first version, our attorney, and, has everybody met Dan? Okay, back. You guys smiling in the back? Anyway, he's working on that, he's sent over the first draft, so it's in our court right now to, to take a look at and try and clean up some of the items, some of the items that Dan missed. No, I'm just, anyway, we'll be working through that. Kind of a light report tonight, but we have tomorrow night, the facilities tour starts at five o'clock. The Rangelay Rambler will be picking all of us up right here at Town Hall and the supervisors will be riding with us, we have a driver and Andy said he wanted to drive, but I don't know.
No.
Yeah, it might invite Anna, Anna Lee over there.
Sure, boss.
Exactly.
I think Ben should drive it.
Is everybody gonna make that?
Yeah.
We've got the itineraries in the packet and we're coming, coming back here and then we've got a work session planned to get through that and I guess an hour, hour and a half for the work session.
And I, I would throw it out there that if there's something else that you'd like to talk about that's not in that thing that we, you know, we talked about at the last meeting, if there's something that we need to, that you guys would like to get some clarification on, then let's try to do that in that first part of that meeting. Lisa won't be there, so we're gonna work on another work session so she can take care of the parts of the bastard, take care of as far as financing, coding, and billing, that'll be another one, but if there's anything that you guys want to have questions on, just ask them then.
If you didn't have a chance, you probably did already, take a look at the information section, we have a letter in there from Andy. Second part of the letter's missing. Oh, okay, it's on the next page. So, anyway, a letter in there from Andy's in support of the college president and that went to the, to Nancy McKellum, she's the president of the junior college system here in Colorado. The gas usage, past ten years in your, in your packets, you'll notice, April was kind of late for gas usage, so. And a couple of other informational items. Oh, a letter from Julie Drake, she's with the, she's the director of the county's health department, and she had a nice letter in there about the community outreach program. Get a chance to take a look at that. Also, I've just got the letter from the county regarding the appointments tonight, so I apologize, that was on the desk in front of you when you got in tonight. That's, Andy, that's all I have.
Any questions for Peter? Doesn't look like we have any old business, let's go to new business. Discussion and action to approve the April 2018 check register.
I'll make a motion, which may approve.
Matt has made a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Luke?
No, no, it was, it was Rich.
He's second at the same time, he can put it.
No, it was these two, I was like, I was leaning.
Second by Luke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and action to approve Resolution, Resolution 2018 dash zero one, appointment, appointing municipal officer Lisa Parry to the town clerk and treasurer. Lisa's put a letter of intent in our packet. Do we have any discussion on Lisa being our town clerk for the, it's a two-year term?
I'll jump in real quick. So, this, when Lisa first came up for me when I first got on, it was kind of like, wait, overwhelming because it was first meeting, so, I'm glad we moved it back one, but I'll just speak on behalf of Lisa, I think she's done a fantastic job, she does a fantastic job, ultimate professional, on point and very, very helpful if you have questions, so, I, I would be very, very happy to make the motion to approve Lisa Parry as the town clerk and treasurer.
I would happily second that one.
Motion by Andy Key, second by Rich Gardner, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Lisa. Item C, discussion and action to approve Resolution 2018 dash zero two, appointing municipal officer Dan Wilson as town attorney. Dan, you want to introduce yourself and?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on the vote and on the new Board of Trustees members. Dan Wilson, I'm based out of Grand Junction, I've had the pleasure of serving you for the last several years as town attorney. My regular schedule is to come up for court once a month and we do a lot of plea bargaining, occasional trial, as you may not know, but it's mostly either occasional speeding tickets, many of the officers write tickets into county, many of them write them into community court. The bulk of the work is probably code enforcement in terms of junk cleanup and ongoing efforts with certain citizens to encourage them and it takes some steady encouragement, but usually, they come around and they come into compliance. And then animals, both dogs at large and then veterinary proof of rabies, so fairly standard things. In the rest of the month, it really is directed by, by Peter, occasional contract, for instance, as he mentioned that I had worked on, the intergovernmental agreement with the county based on the Craig model and it appears that they would prefer to do more like the Mesa County, Grand Junction, Fruit of Palisade model where the, where the entities really turn over the entire process to the county. The county sets building permit fees to be an enterprise so that they pay for the department and the advantage of that, of course, is one set of administration and one set of building inspector standards throughout Mesa County. This advantage is a little bit of loss of local control, but I think you'll hear back from them, they prefer a model like that and obviously, you'll get a chance to look at that, that policy issue. Other things I've been involved in on occasion are rarely an employee issue in interpreting and trying to stay current with state statutes. A change from last year was the legislature blessed us with the requirement to have the town appoint counsel for people who are incarcerated, so, that's, that's just something you deal with on, on the state legislature. My typical monthly billing is somewhere around ten to fifteen hours, depending on what's, what's going on, that typically includes the court thing. I, for those of you that don't know me, my background, this is actually my forty-first year practicing law in Colorado, I can't believe I'm that old, but I'm still enjoying it and I've, at various times, been the town attorney for, you'll love these names, Keluride, back before it was completely rich and hippieville, when there were still miners, Town of Norwood, I'd also been the county attorney in San Miguel County and then came to Grand Junction in nineteen eighty-eight and was the city attorney there until two thousand and four when I retired and really went into my own private practice because it really wasn't ready to be done. And now I am working primarily, I've got a couple of clients in Grand Junction and the town of Rangelay is, if you will, my joy, 'cause I enjoy doing local government kind of work. Your staff for a small town is really excellent. I mean, you've really got some firepower for a town of twenty-five hundred, you should be really proud of them generally, the folks I've worked with are just consummate professionals. I would very much like to continue being the town attorney.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Dan?
Um, I, kind of slightly off of this a little bit, but they're using enterprise fees to pay for those in Moffett County?
They are treating it as an enterprise for the building, so building permit fees, if I'm pulling a permit for a house.
Right.
Goes into a central pot, same thing for commercial, and that pays for the entire department, both the clerks, the administration, and I don't even know, they may have three full-time inspectors now. So, yeah, it's a non-general fund set aside.
So, stay outside of Tabor. Very interesting.
Absolutely, and it's been that way, actually, that particular setup has been pre-Tabor. That arrangement went into effect when I first got to Grand Junction in about nineteen eighty-nine, so, the question of Tabor has never come up because it pre-existed.
Interesting. So, I, I'm very appreciative of what you've done for the town, I, I, you've put a lot of work in and I appreciate that, but from my perspective, I, I feel like we have a different direction on some of the, what's the word I want to use here, direction for prosecuting community members, so, from that perspective, I, I just am going to say that I'm going to be a no vote on this, so.
What, and if, if it curves out, I get reappointed, would you mind telling me? What, and if it curves out, I get reappointed, would you mind telling me what's the difference?
Absolutely.
Because obviously I've got a lot of discretion and if I need to change to implement council's policy, I need to know what your concerns are.
Absolutely. No, I would be more than happy to meet with you on that.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dan? I would entertain a motion to reappoint Dan Wilson as Town Attorney.
So booked.
Rich Garner?
I'll second.
Matt Belgrin, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Upstain.
So it looks like we're three to one with one upstain. Do you need to know those, Lisa? Where did you get them?
So, please, Luke.
Luke. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Discussion and action to approve Resolution 2018-03, Appointing Municipal Officer Karen Wilzik, Town Municipal Court Judge. Karen?
I submitted a letter, I think, trying to clarify any questions or issues that you might have had, and I've explained that I've been the town judge, municipal judge since If you have any questions about any thing that I've addressed in my letter or anything outside of that.
So I do. I appreciate again everything you've done. That's a long commitment and thank you for that. My question is, in your letter, you addressed your relationship with the police chief, but what about his staff? To me, I still see that as a conflict of interest because they are under him, so any citation they write, I see as a conflict of interest. How, how do you handle that? What's your process or have you even considered it?
I think I've never had a quote-unquote conflict. I had one person, I mean, with them, with, when the chief writes a ticket, that's a different issue.
Right.
Or if he investigates a case that results in somebody being summoned, then that's something that potentially could be a conflict and the defendant needs to know the relationship and have the option for me to step aside and have Teresa Sims handle the banner. But I think, I also think I had a case in that situation where they didn't, it wasn't an issue. As far as the officers writing tickets and that being conflict, I've, we have an opinion. Initially, Mr. Romney had written an opinion regarding that and based on the size of the town and things like that, as long as people were comfortable with me in that position and felt that I was unbiased, number one, and number two, the Town Attorney handles all the plea deals. And I made reference in the letter to you that I, usually it's almost cast in stone when Mr. Wilson recommends a sentence on a plea, he's the one that negotiates. I know nothing about what they are discussing, what is being offered until they come back into the courtroom. On rare occasion, I have deviated from that and from the recommended sentence. And I explained that to Mayor Schaefer some while back at the public safety meeting, that I do deviate when it is in the person's best interest. For instance, they're running at large and they, a $300 fine doesn't benefit them. A $50 fine will get their attention and the $250 that I suspend, they can use to repair their fence or whatever the issue is that brought them into the court. I would rather see that happen. And then we set a follow-up appointment for them to come back to court, depending on time of year. If it's January and the ground's frozen, we may need to set them out until it's feasible for them to put in fence posts and things like that. So, but in answer to your question, that was researched pretty much by Mr. Romney and as long as people are made aware, if they, if they're comfortable with me, and only one person that I can recall specifically requested that I stepped aside, Teresa took that case and then another one was a council member that was cited and wished to contest it. So I got ahold of another judge down in Fruta and he was going to come out and handle the matter, but it resolved itself.
So none of these go towards county court? Nothing's passed to the county? If there's a municipal-like case that you are supposed to be on and there was a conflict or say, say the police chief wrote the citation or whatever, there's no chance it would go to the county where we're paying the county to handle it?
You wouldn't pay the county to handle that. What would happen, Teresa could handle it, the case.
Okay.
And if, if it was something that has like an extreme amount of restitution that really isn't, our sentencing goes up to 90 days in jail and a $300 fine.
Right.
If somebody has restitution for, say, a dog bite and there's emergency room bills, there's, municipal court is not the best place for that. So the Town Attorney can opt to dismiss that case and have it refiled in county court where they have, you know, three years they can hold over the person's head, which gives them time to pay their restitution as, in an amount that they can afford. You know, for us to say, okay, we've got 90 days and if you owe $5,000, you've got to pay it in 90 days. Municipal court isn't a place for a ticket like that or a case like that. But anything that goes into county court, the only thing that would automatically go to county court is a, an appeal. If somebody files an appeal on a municipal conviction, because we're not a court of record, no tape recordings of the proceedings, they don't have a review of the file, they actually have a trial de novo, which is a brand-new trial in county court. That is the court that will handle the appeal, so to speak. But it would never cost any money to move a case into the county court because that's, that's part of your tax dollars. You know, there's no cost to the town or anybody.
Well, I, I'm, that's what I'm specifically asking. Would the town be funding any money to go towards the county for that case? But it's sounding like no.
No, no, no.
If I'm hearing correctly, so. Okay. The other thing I was going to ask about is, I had an individual come up and ask me why they weren't allowed to use a mobile, well, mobile's not the right word, but a, an attorney calling in from Denver on a video cam. They had said that they were told they were going to be able to do that and the day of the trial, this came up and they were told they could not have that person call in for the trial. And I'm not sure what, what would cause that to happen, but they had said it had been agreed upon and then all of a sudden that got pulled from them. Was that, is that something we can address?
I've never, I've never heard anything about that.
It was, it was a dog trial with a, running at large with a dog and they, let's see, we'll get, I'll get with Peter on that because that was, it was concerning that they were not allowed to use their defense attorney that was a specialized animal rights attorney and they had hired them out of Denver.
I've never heard of them.
There may have been some while, I remember something, there was a, a female attorney out of Denver and she would appear out of her home because you could hear her children running around and if I'm correct on this, the one, the one case in particular, she appeared out of her home with children in there, but when it comes to a trial, you can't, the attorney has to be able to cross-examine people. They could appear by phone normally if somebody's being sentenced, but if it's a trial or a hearing, the attorney has to be here to represent that person. But we don't do video, we've never done video, you know, we're a court of non-record.
The only reason I'm asking is like, why was it pulled, I guess? Because they were under the impression they were, they had permission to do it and then that was revoked and that's the concern, so I.
I, that doesn't even sound familiar. That doesn't, if it's a trial, the attorney has to be here. But that particular instance where it was revoked, I don't know anything about that and even how long ago it may have been. I remember one situation where an attorney wanted to appear on a case and actually, to be honest with you, I can't remember if it was county or community court, but it was a woman attorney out of Denver and that operated out of a house.
Sounds right. To have my facts straight, it wasn't, I don't think they were paid. It was a pro bono. They were doing a pro bono job on it, but. Then one more. The last question I have is, do you have any bias towards ATVs, OHVs?
Um.
Because I think that's a direction Rangeli's trying to go and I'd like to hear a solid answer on that.
Well, not a bias per se. I think the, the ordinance itself initially, the intent was for people to go on the road to get to BLM land. Originally, that was the intent. I see some abuses in my daily life. The other day being at the Come and Go and that picture that's on Facebook right now with the little teeny girl on the front of that motorcycle, being driven by somebody about this tall was very dangerous. I mean, that's, but a bias, not in what they're allowed to do. When somebody gets a ticket, they'll be treated as a violation of the law. They can't be on the state highway. They can cross it, they can't drive, but I don't have a bias, I guess, per se. I don't think of it that way.
Any other questions for Karen?
No, but I would like to say something. Karen, I'm in a unique position. I've known you and Vince since almost day one that I moved here. And I'm also in a unique position because I know that the appearance or perception of impropriety or favoritism and thing does not constitute evidence of that. And I would like to tell you publicly in front of this entire forum that although I have heard rumor after rumor and complaint after complaint of this, it has not been my experience that any of it bears any fruit in actual fact. So if the board votes you back in as the judge, I would ask that you continue to be sensitive and professional in the appearance of impropriety. I think you've done a fantastic job up to this point and I would expect that you would continue to do that. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Well, I would entertain a motion to reelect Karen Wilzik as Town Municipal Court Judge for the next two years.
So booked.
I'll second.
Motion by Rich, second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Andy Key. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and action to approve Resolution 2018-04, Supporting the Candidate, Main Street Community Application Submission.
Okay. I've got a couple of things. Scott, you want to say anything on this? Okay.
I'll let you handle that, because it's a joint effort.
Yes, it is a joint effort and Connie will be a valuable and very important piece to this process, but they've been an affiliate member now for three years, something like that. And as an affiliate member, you basically don't have a lot of requirements, but you do get access to some of the Main Street program benefits. As a community applicant, we will have access to grants, funding, expertise coming out to consult with us on the, on the Main Street aesthetics, on the Main Street walkability, pedestrian user friendliness, you know, all the aspects of Main Street that make it, make it important to tourism. And they have a lot of different programs and a lot of different people associated that could come in and consult with us and provide, I think, some good feedback for our Main Street and how the businesses interact with Main Street and how they're positioned, how they display their products and what their facades might portray and look like. So Main Street puts us into a different category within the Main Street program, gives us a lot more benefit for the, for the effort. We're looking at the chamber office as being the point for the candidate program. The town would have to be obviously involved because the state recognizes the town as the application entity for, for the Main Street program. So we would have a participation on the board and Connie could, in association with the town, could work on a board appointment that would be made up of maybe different membership than the RDA currently, but they would be people that she would feel and the town hopefully would have some say in that, but would feel that would be effective in planning projects for Main Street each year. And then the town would in turn participate. Initially, the funding's kind of a, kind of an issue, how we get to the funding process for the projects that are generated from the, from the candidate board. And a lot of that, in talking to some of the Main Street representatives, a lot of that comes initially from the town and from the reserves and from grants that we apply for. So the initial projects might be a 10, 15, $20,000 project to improve aesthetics of one part of Main Street or to improve signage or provide further branding. You know, we've initiated some branding efforts, but to improve our branding displays and signage and projection, projecting that branding. So anyway, the application is something that needs to be submitted into the, to the program administrators by the 15th of the month and we prepared that. That's what's in front of you. And if you're comfortable with, with moving forward with the candidate program, we'll get that out, submitted. That doesn't mean we're going to be part of the program. They have to consider that once they get the application.
And the architect is going to be here. The architect of the Main Street program, Larry, is coming to Rangeli on the 14th at 3:30 to take a look at our town. And then he'll hang out here over the night and then go to here. That's his speaker.
Connie, how long does this program last? Is it just like for one year? Is it long-term?
It's long.
So, Rich, I can add a little bit to that. You go from a candidate, you go from affiliate to a candidate.
Keely, will you come up, please?
Please.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Depp.
Tell your life story.
I'm Keely Winger. Okay. So you started as an affiliate, you moved to candidacy and then you moved to two other stages. And your last stage is a graduate, but you can stay as a graduate for forever. As you progress through the program, your funding opportunities increase. So initially, as a candidate, you start like at 2,500 a year that you can apply for in grants, then you go to five and then you go to 10 or something along those lines. So it helps you advance through the program as well, but it's, it's nationwide. It's a national program.
And are they targeted mostly at rural, smaller communities? Or this, any community can be?
Any community can be. Ridgeway is a prime example of a Main Street community, actually, in Colorado that has been very successful and progressive. Any community can be. Ridgeway is a prime example of a Main Street community actually in Colorado that has been very successful and, and progressive, so.
Have you had interaction with the communities that have done this and they get very positive about it?
Me, myself.
Yes.
Meker is a candidate community who's looking to advance to the next step and the third step slips my mind right now. And there's, they've had some successes. They're currently working towards developing that board because once you go from a candidate to that next step, you have to develop a board. As a candidate, you don't have to, but, and so they are, they're progressing through it and there's progress in some areas for sure. It depends on your leadership is my comment on that. Ridgeway is a great example of a community that has seen great success. Longmont is another one. If you've ever been in Longmont, down there, Main Street, they've got center dividers and that was a Main Street project, paid for through fundings with grants, so.
I don't, I don't know if any of you guys have had a chance to talk to the business owners in town, but from the ones I have talked to, there's, they, they would really like this to go through. They think it's a really good opportunity for them.
I, I don't personally see a downside to this except for the initial cost played, but in the long run, this may reap a lot of benefits.
But we can also too, we can do fundraisers to help offset some of that cost as well because in Louisiana, I sat on a committee for the Main Street program. We did every Friday night throughout the summer, we raised money by doing little concerts, so.
Yeah, Rangelley's very good about raising money. So does that mean Matt's gonna get up and say?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, just asking.
Can I ask you?
Any other questions on this Community Application Submission for the Main Street community?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2018-04 to support the candidate program for, to join the candidate program for the Main Street community.
I'd like to second that, Chris.
Motion made by Andy Key, second by Rich Garner. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye abstain.
Matt abstains. Discussion and action to appoint Keely Winger to a vacancy on the RDA/ RDC board. Keely? Do you wanna say anything?
Oh, really?
Fair enough.
Are you wanting to say something?
No, absolutely not.
Hi, Andy.
Hi.
Keely's been involved with a lot of this stuff through the county is, when she was working as the Economic Development Assistant. So she's very up on all this stuff and that was one of the reasons we thought she'd be a very good candidate, so.
Oh.
I was trying to do it for... Please state your name.
Okay, I'm Keely Winger, again. Andy's right. I previously worked for Rio Blanco County in the Economic Development Department, so very current with some of the things that the town and the RDA and the RDC board are working towards and trying to accomplish. I'm also a Small Business Development Center certified consultant, so when the RDA or the RDC receives grant or funding requests from local businesses, I, there's been discussion about potentially putting in a stipulation there and I could then essentially provide that right away. Not to say that if I wasn't on the RDA board, I wouldn't, I obviously would, but I do have that piece in there too. But I also, as a member of this community, really want to help change or improve or grow or make Rangelley a better place. I love this place and feel so welcome here that I would love to be a part of it in other ways, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Keely Winger to the vacancy on the RDA/ RDC boards.
Second.
Motion by Andy Key, second by Rich Garner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the informational items, Connie, do you have anything coming up in May that...
Yeah, I got Becky's Walk Saturday. If you can't make it, you need to give me a shout out, I'll give you the link because it needs to be going to Becky Dubert's memorial, memorial walk because that's gonna set me up for next year. Like, if I make, we make $30,000, I'm throwing a number out there, it's wishful thinking, the next year's gonna be 25% more. Right now, I'm looking for a minimum of 50 people to walk in this and I've got about 18. So, all the money is going straight to MS because I have donations from, for the shirts, the water, the prize money and all the little ditty bag stuff. So everything goes straight back to MS. So, and if you don't wanna get online, you can write a check. I will, I have envelopes at the office, pre-addressed to MS and we're just gonna send those checks off that day. So, yeah. Uh, let's see, what else? Uh, we've got, we have a war meeting on the 23rd, so anybody, we will be looking for volunteers. So if you wanna come to that, that'll be at the Chamber Office and Wild Bunch is gonna have their grand opening on the 25th, so I encourage all of y'all to come out. They're gonna have their paddle boats, their paddle boards, they've got their bikes in. So, let's see if we can help support them and get that business kicking off.
What's the, Connie, what's the status of kinda getting, teaming up with U-Rat on their stuff?
Okay, so U-Rat, the Outlaw Jamboree is on the 30th through, of May through the 2nd of June. I'm gonna be down there promoting our event and giving them a helping hand because when we have our event, they bring in the folks too, so it's kinda a two-way street. So anybody's wanting to go...
You're gonna coordinate with them to try to give them a hand with that?
Yeah, I've already, yeah, Carly and I've already, we're in constant contact.
Okay. Do they need some more help?
Yes, we can always use some more help.
I'll get ahold of you later this week then.
Okay, sweet. And then Matt's not gonna be able to take vacation, I don't think, so if y'all are going down there, I might ride with y'all.
Just call and say Matt.
Huh? The 24th, oh, my visit Rangelley day, oh wow, almost forgot about that one. So yeah, I'll be bringing in the press and chambers and welcome centers that day. This'll be our third annual.
Is that something you'd like us at?
It's up to y'all. This is, I'm showcasing Rangelley. So if y'all wanna come, that particular day, it might be very helpful because I have the Fruta Welcome Center also coming in and I just totally, bring it on, I'll work it out. So yeah, I could probably use a helping hand showing off.
We'll maybe see if we can get a couple of us to...
Okay.
What's that date?
That's the 24th.
What was the time?
Uh, it's, we're gonna start at eight in the morning at the Chamber Office. And then we take them around to the museums just for a little bit, just to have that little taste and a couple of rock arts and we have lunch and I have Miles come in in to do some presentations. I'm partnering up with Colorado Tourism Office.
What time was that?
Eight in the morning till three in the afternoon. And then on the 14th at 3:30, Main Street guy is gonna be here. He's gonna come look at our town and hopefully give us some suggestions on how we can start improving.
What was that time?
Uh, 3:30.
And then what was the time on the grand opening for Wild Bunch?
Oh, that starts, she's got it going around 10, we're gonna do the ribbon cutting at noon.
Okay.
But we have a Hillclaw conference call at 10 that morning. At 10 at the, at the Chamber Office, just, it's more.
You said it.
Okay. And just bring your calendar over and then I'll put everything in it for you.
Actually, all seriousness, if you, when you do your, your emails, if you add that calendar invite part, oh, that makes...
Yeah, and I prefer to do it that way myself, so, um... Yeah, that's, oh, and I'm starting a little volunteer group with some of the girls from the high school who approached me. So we'll be meeting this month and I'll start helping get them doing volunteer work throughout the town, so.
How many girls do you have doing that, Connie?
Um, right now, the little girl that I'm talking to, she says she has like 12 friends that all wanna volunteer, so I'm gonna put them to volunteering.
I like that. Yes, you will.
And I will take any suggestions on where you think they could be useful. Shoot me an email, give me a call. I think that's it, or...
Business over breakfast.
Oh, Business Over Breakfast will be held at Blue Mountain Inn, 7 o'clock Thursday morning. Save your money, come join us.
It's not my turn to buy.
Oh, talk on it. Okay, so I think that's it. I gotta start writing these down in different colors.
Connie, do you normally send these out as calendar invites?
Yes, and I really need to get, like, can y'all all send me an email, which are new emails, from your new emails?
Is everybody using the new?
Probably one of the emails that we've tossed around, we can just forward to or something.
I'm not worried about it, um...
Connie, I know, I know that I appreciate it a lot, just the small informational items that's coming up in the next, you know, whether it be two weeks or, or a month and...
Okay.
And if, if there's any way that you can find time and you're scheduled to do that, I would surely appreciate that.
I will.
That's awesome.
Okay, I will shoot y'all emails and invites on everything, but don't complain if you get too many, okay?
That's fine. We like to see your smiley, shining face also.
All right, sweet, but sometimes I need a break from y'all. I love y'all all, but I...
I only stop in like every couple of weeks so you can tell me what to do.
Okay, that's no problem, I'm good at that. How's Matt?
So on item number 16, we have a Planning and Zoning Board vacancy. Peter, is that correct?
Yes.
Are we still looking for...
Yes, we are.
Are we looking for a council member to be there or are we looking somebody within the community?
Actually, a council member cannot participate on that.
Okay.
Yeah, because you rule on so many of the things that come off of that board.
So I'm no longer on the board? Is that part of it?
Yeah, you didn't resign, but you're officially off.
Is that the vacancy then?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess, keep that in mind. If you know somebody?
Do some, beat in the brush and see who wants to...
If you have...
Do you know who's on the board right now?
Yeah. Rick Brady, Terry Drake, Ryan Hewitt, Brett Schreier. Am I missing that?
I've only been to one meeting.
Okay.
Yes, Jeff Duber, thank you.
Um, you can see the schedule announcements. Is there anything else that needs to be brought in front of the Town Council? I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Dan.
Dan, go ahead.
I see the Tank was on here, so I just had to tell your story. My brother-in-law and sister-in-law live in Massachusetts. Classic Easterners. We'd been out a year or so ago and they treated us to Manhattan downtown, so we returned the favor. And, and working with Peter, we ended up doing a day trip to Goblin Valley, stayed in Price, did Nine Mile, which was just great, hadn't done it, and then had the highlight literally blew their minds because we went to the Tank. And was there for about an hour and a half singing. And if you haven't done that with somebody that has a beautiful voice, I don't, it is fantastic. And then we stayed at Blue Mountain Inn and then Bud gave us like a two-and-a-half-hour tour of the Otter Mill Museum and my brother-in-law is a total gearhead, so he just loved that. And then made the loop back to Grand Junction with the Canyon Pintado and just, I just wanted to comment on it because it's part of that great loop and especially for out-of-towners that haven't been out west, it was just the perfect touch. Small town, really cool stuff, and then the Tank was, is really a highlight and I'm sure the community's promoting it and it, it's just fun, so I just wanted to share that.
Thanks, Dan. That's good to hear.
I'd entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Andy Key?
Second by Rich Garner.
For adjourn.